...fourteen or 2013, we used two and a half percent because that's basically been the average of CPI. So that's how we came up with the two and a half percent for the revenues. So again, there's been a lot of conversation on this part here, and I know that there'll be more, and there probably will be some changes on that before the final plan comes in or final recommendations are made. So that's on the text, but let me draw your attention to the tables because Commissioner Pies has brought up a good point. You should have three individual sheets here. This first sheet is just a cost sheet, and the key was, the purpose of this sheet was to show how we brought the 2004 cost of projects and escalated them up to $2,008 by using a 10% annual increase. So the purpose of the first sheet is to give us 2,009 costs of projects. That's its only purpose. The reason it goes out to 2019 was is if you didn't build anything, it would just show you, if you never built anything in your network, how much costs are going to continue to increase based on a 2,009 price. For example, if you look at the bottom of the gray bar, it says 3511. Do you track that on that? If you built, and that 3511 is, we went back and looked at all of the existing projects in the long-range plan and found out how much they're actually costing if they're being worked on, and then provided an inflation rate. The next column is if you just applied a straight factor, the number's 3498. So the difference between two different methods of forecasting, it's right on 3500. I mean, it's plus or minus. The point is, in 2009, if we were to build everything in Anchorage, it would cost us $3.5 billion. So that's the '09 cost of everything in the long-range plan excluding the Kinnick Arm So the only purpose of this sheet is to give us the current estimate of all projects in the LRTP. So once we have that number, we know where to start. Okay? The second sheet is only about, I'm sorry.
If I could, before we move off this page, then what is the projection out to 2019?
Commissioner Pies, what it says is that if you had, for example, in 2009, you had $3,400, or $303,500 million worth of improvements in 2009. Let's just say that's the number. If you added a 4% inflation rate to all of the costs of those projects, it would cost you $3.637 in 2010. If you did not build anything and you added another 4% inflation rate in 2011, it would cost you $3783. If you didn't build anything and you just added inflation rate, it would cost you $39. Again, the only purpose of this sheet is to tell us the number in 2009. The rest of it's just illustrative purposes. Does that make sense?
Yes, now that you've explained it.
Okay.
So this doesn't include any future projects that might be added, such as?
It's for illustration.
Okay.
True.
Mr. Weddleton, and then Mr. Eishem.
Were we still going through these? Did you want to hit some more on these?
If I could, I could just have Nancy had, excuse, Commissioner Pies had one more question, and I think it's important. On the second page regarding the revenues, because we talked about the cost of the projects, now we need to talk about the revenues. And the second page should be a colored copy. It's pretty small print, just because when it copied, it shrunk it down. But if you look at the bottom, there's lines in green. Let me just, without having to read the gory details. Using our traditional sources of funds, federal highway funds, local bond funds, maybe federal highway dollars, for all projects in Anchorage and Eagle River, our current revenue streams are not enough to implement the long-range transportation plan. We need new streams of revenue. So the new streams of revenue are, if there is a gas line, there would be some infrastructure investment. Those would be available. Some with a small amount of stimulus funds are the next one. The state transportation plan, that's a statewide document, also notices that the state as a whole is running out of money, and its traditional sources of federal dollars is not enough. So something of Alaska Transportation Fund would need to be created, and then so Anchorage would be the beneficiary of some portion of that. And then a new program would have to be some sort of a, probably a state infrastructure bank or statewide bonds, similar to the kind that we had in the past. So those new revenue sources, are they reasonable? From most of the comments that we have, yes, they are reasonable. The concern is, is that are the amounts reasonable? And that's what I asked the commission to look at, because particularly in the out years, there's some substantial port, I mean, it's up to probably 20 to 25% of our overall program. So I'd ask you to take a look at that, but that's what those new sources are for. And so, and that's, again, a lot of comments and questions that we've heard. And the last page just shows, do we meet financial constraint? Goes out to 2027. And the key is, we have to basically be at zero or spending, as the cost of projects come in, we whittle some of them down, whatever is remaining, we add inflation, then we whittle it down next year, we add inflation, we whittle it down, and if you keep doing that, the answer has to be financially constrained by 2027. So it's this easiest way that I can explain how to do a very complex mathematical process. I guess the only benefit is, is that an economist isn't explaining it, do you? So I think, again, there's a lot more information available, and I'd be glad to follow up with each commission member.
Mr. Eishem, you keep raising your hand, so I look since you have something urgent to add.
Not really urgent, but just, on that third chart, does that assume that you're working off projects that exist right now and nothing new is added?
Through the chair, that's exactly right. Just whittling away on the existing long-range transportation plan.
And that's not realistic. I mean, they're going to be adding stuff, so, okay. But that's how you calculate it, just?
That's how we calculate it.
Work your way through the pile.
Yep. And just recognize, this is all projects in Anchorage and Eagle River, because our financial constraint has to include everything. Transit, roads, trails, buses, everything.
And Goodwood is not included?
That's correct.
In the?
That's correct.
In this. Okay. Mr. Weddleton?
A couple of questions. Existing LRTP, the one you did in 2007, is that one considered fiscally constrained?
It is.
So if you applied the new assumptions that are in this, would that one be fiscally constrained?
It would if you, if the new sources of revenue and the new amounts of revenue, and this might not be all the sources and the levels may be different, then it would, something like this would have to be supported by the policy committee for the existing plan to be financially constrained with or without the bridge. And I think, as I mentioned, as of December of last year, this, every state and MPO is faced with this challenge of showing escalation in cost and dollars built and escalation in revenues received. And I can tell the commission, I talked to people in this business, and I don't know if it's anecdotally, but what they tell me is, Lance, if you can do this and be 50% right the first five years out, you're in the wrong line of business. If you can get this right beyond 10, you're definitely in the wrong line of business. I mean, these are people that do this for a living. It's very difficult to forecast revenues in the future. But everyone has said, if your assumptions are there, and if your assumptions for your forecasts are available, and looked into the federal highways, what do they determine reasonable? And I think the sources are reasonable. The amounts, I think that's where we've got to really sharpen our pencils.
Kind of a follow-up. So if this amendment to remove the Kinnick Arm Crossing were rejected and it were left in there, would we then be using the 2007 LRTP? That would just be the operating document, or would we start using this new one with the new assumptions?
If the policy committee took the entire amendment process and decided to not act on it or do something different and not consider the work that we've done to date, I believe our existing adopted plan, existing financial constraint, existing with the bridge, that would be the document that we would be working with.
But the reality is, that's not really fiscally constrained. I mean, a couple of years ago, it looked good, but we know now that it's not. Is that correct? Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Pies?
Yes. So to finish up with this financial, I'm still adjusting it, this financial chart, if I understand correctly, the third page assumes that no new projects, and with no new projects, we, meaning AMATS, would be in the red by 2018?
Yes. What I did through the chair, and what I've done is, I've done two things on this last sheet. The top, above the dark line, shows all of the projects in both Anchorage and Eagle River Long Range Plan combined out to 20 years. The bottom is only, if you look at both Anchorage and Eagle River's Long Range Plan, as many of the commission members know, there's a short range, there's a set of projects in the short-range recommendations, those we want to build in the first 10 years, and those we want to build in the next 10 years. If you look at the bottom, the bottom is not all projects to 2027. It's only the projects in the short-range plan. So if you just, in the short-range part of our long-range, in the first 10 years, so all the projects for the next 20 years is $3.5 billion. But if you just look at the ones we want to build in the first 10, it's 1.7 billion. So the bottom is just to show, if you added the same amount of revenue coming in, we are very, we are definitely going to meet financial constraint in the first 10 years. It's the latter 10 that we start to get a little concerned.
And if I can ask one more question on that, does it include any part of any Ingraham Bowl connection, construction funds?
It does. It would include the section from Third to Whitney, which is in the existing long-range transportation plan. So if a couplet was, an additional couplet was to go across, a small portion of that, and I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but a small portion of it, particularly close to the Third Avenue side, is in these estimates.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Weddleton?
I guess no one else is up. Okay. Looking through your chapter 13, there were a couple of projects in there that didn't have any cost on it. Is that normal, or?
Yeah, through the chair, and I'm not sure which ones there may be, but there may have been some projects in there where we just wanted to do some lane striping, restriping, and so the cost of them was pretty small. There may have been some studies in there, but Commissioner Weddleton, if there's, I can't figure out which one would not have?
Our Mountain Air Drive, 808, cost to be determined, 809, cost to be determined.
For Mountain Air Drive, we do have some current estimates, so we would need to update that. We have an estimate of about $4.5 million for Mountain Air, and then I can't remember the other one, but we'll add that.
The dollar amounts, they're not material to your whole, I mean, if you plug those in, it wouldn't make a huge difference.
If they're missing dollar amounts, we will add them.
So this chart with the three pages, a spreadsheet would change?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Pies?
Yes. Two questions. With regard to Ingraham Bowl connection being in this AMATS LRTP, wasn't it a condition of the municipal assembly's approval of the Kinnick Arm Crossing amendment that state funds not be spent on that? Wasn't it their intent that Cabada would come up for funding for that connector project?
That is correct.
And then why are, has the funding for Ingraham Bowl shown as part of the AMATS obligation?
Let me clarify. In our existing long-range transportation plan, before the Kinnick Arm Crossing, we had a recommendation to build a connection from Third Avenue down to Whitney Road. We did not have a recommendation to build a couplet or a connection from Third all the way over to Government Hill. So the, as a result of the amendment to add Kinnick Arm, there was comments that Kinnick Arm Bridge and Toll Authority should pay for the connection from the Government Hill all the way over towards the Third Avenue project, if you will. That's in the long-range plan. So, and right, that no state funds would be used for that project as well.
I don't quite understand. I thought, I don't have right in front of me, and maybe you can point me to the page in our packet, the municipal assembly's condition regarding who is going to pay for the connection from the bridge to Ingraham Bowl. I thought that they wanted, the assembly wanted Cabada to pay for that entire connection.
That's correct. If you give us a minute, we'll find it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Spelder has pointed it out on the handout you gave us. So I guess if that was the will of the assembly, I'm curious why it would be budgeted in the long-range transportation plan for state funding?
Madam Chair, if I could, I think, I want to make, it is difficult to explain without a map. The existing long, or the long-range transportation plan prior to the Kinnick Arm Crossing recommended a connection from Ingraham Bowl down to Whitney. So that was already in the plan. That maintains in the plan and has been maintained in the plan. When the Kinnick Arm Bridge, when the Kinnick Arm Project was added to the long-range plan, the condition, Ms. Underwood had noted it here, and again, I think it's in your packet, Cabada will fund the design and construction of an Ingraham Bowl connection in a manner to permit its opening as early as 2018 if needed. And I think what the key is, is that the existing LRTP only had part of that connection, which was basically halfway, or maybe not even halfway, from Third North, but coming all the way from Government Hill South to Third Avenue was, would be the responsible of, or from Government Hill South to the, towards Third Avenue would be responsibility of Cabada. And that was a condition that maintains.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair. To Mr. Wilber, the, this commission passed a resolution back in 2007, and I've reread it. Are there any of those 21 conditions, with the exception of condition 18, which was that the EIS hadn't been passed at that time, are there any other conditions that are now refuted or, yes, I guess, refuted? Or no longer valid? And if you haven't reread it?
Yeah.
Recently, I guess I would just pose that question for your answer.
We will do that. Let me, we'll refresh our, this and to see which ones have been addressed or which ones are still standing.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Weddleton?
Has this process, since the assemblies saying that we should look at this back in, I guess, December, has it followed the new public participation plan?
I think it has. However, there is, I think, our practice has not been consistent through this effort. And let me just back up. The assemblies' efforts started with a resolution, I want to think it was in September. Their resolution to the policy committee to start this process was in September. The policy committee took action in October of last year to get us on our way. As we were on our way, this issue about the financial plan and new information, particularly in December, has really created a lot of work. The new public involvement plan laid out a process in which documents should go through a public review process, and the technical committee should get an opportunity to review that, put some technical recommendations together, forward those to the policy committee, ask the policy committee to put draft documents out on the street. We have gone from the staff effort to the technical committee, to the policy committee. The difference is, is that in this process, the policy committee has not had the benefit of technical committee's recommendations. I mean, technical committee was still working on that information. Policy committee reviewed what the technical committee had put together in its draft form, and that's what you have in chapter 13. That's what you have on the tables. And I know that staff, and I know the technical committee will be refining that. So I think the key difference has been the policy committee typically has the benefit of a recommendation from the technical committee. In this process, they did not have that benefit, and they elected to move forward with the process and start the public review. So that's the path we're on. Thanks.
Anything further?
Yes. Madam Chair, I just wanted to note that I did send in some questions to Mr. Wilber a couple of days ago, which I know he's going to respond to, and if those haven't been distributed, the other commissioners might like to see them. Since then, I did have one other question on security, the security issue or the security benefit. I noticed that the city's hazard management, I don't have it right in front of me, we have a hazard management plan right now, and I didn't see in the public review draft that that hazard management plan in any way referred to use of the bridge as part of hazard management or security, and just wanted to have Mr. Wilber check on that or respond to that.
We need to, there are some of these things we need to bring up again during the hearing that are things we want addressed rather than just questions answered.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions? More questions? Hearing none? We will take about a five-minute break before we get started with our hearing.
But what we want to do is stop on the 2007 so that we can, because frankly, people have been asking me. I thought about it, Tom, and I weighed whether or not, you know, people, we have one public hearing, one planning zoning, and normally we like to give, particularly if the turnout's pretty weak the first time. Just up to you guys, I wouldn't suggest that you go err on. And the key is, I don't think we're going to hear any new issues on May, on June one. I think all the issues we're going to hear, we've heard. We're not going to get them from different sources, but I don't think we're going to get new issues. We will get you one. And I do have an answer, Tom, and I did, I got one.
What?
Can I do one? From what?
What?
Red meat or whatever? Family?
Both?
Yes. I saw.
I know.
I didn't.
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 I didn't.[1664.15]
Got to be good. I brought backup food.
We got a lot of coffee. Stop the end, you know, we're in the... So, we have a public hearing, we wait for it.
I will call the May 18 meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will the Secretary called role, please? Aishem. Phil. Mr. Yoschmar. Here. Frederick. Here. Weddleton. Here. E. Here. Lang. Here. Turner. Here. We have a quorum. Before we go to the next item on our agenda, which is disclosures, I just want to note for the record that Commissioners Pease, Frederick Yoschmar, Weddleton, Aishem and Jones attended the 5:30 work session on the AMAT's Long Range Transportation Plan Amendment to Delete the Knick Arm Crossing. The next item on our agenda are disclosures. Mr. Aishem.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. As in the past on this issue, I have disclosed the fact that I have family members who have an interest in the Knick Arm Crossing project. I myself do not, but I have sisters-in-law who have been active on both sides of the issue. I don't have any obligations to them in terms of financial or other obligations, and I've participated in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick.
Nothing.
Ms. Yoschmar.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to disclose that I am the managing partner of Cedar Park LLC, which owns 110 acres in the Matsu Borough within the city limits of Palmer.
Okay, but that's not over where the bridge is going, okay?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Yoschmar. Ms. Jones?
Nothing to disclose this evening.
See, Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, I think I should disclose that I work for the Alaska Department of Natural Resources. We are involved in planning processes, and specifically the revision of the Susitna area plan. One of the items this evening, the Long Range Transportation Plan, could have an effect upon development inside of Matsu Borough, and specifically on state land inside of that area. So, I want to disclose that I work for the department. I do not get directly involved in these decisions, but there's an indirect impact. There's no direct financial impact, but there is a professional impact, so I want to disclose that.
Thank you. And Mr. Weddleton?
I'd like to disclose that in the case 2009-07-5 for the Long Range Transportation Plan, and a number of years on the Board of the Anchorage Citizens Coalition, we were very actively involved in opposing this project. And also, I'm a member of the Anchorage Chamber of Commerce's Business and Economic Development Committee, which also did quite a bit of work on this, and they came out for it. So, I just want to let people know.
And I have nothing.
Oh, Mr. Aishem. I also, just as a point of disclosure, wanted to put on the record that I did receive emails today forwarding to me the copy of the letter we received from the, I think Deputy Commissioner, Mr. Richards, from the Department of Transportation and Public Facilities. I had one, the one that was given to us tonight. I had one copy forwarded to me by Mary Ann Pease, one copy forwarded to me by, I think someone with DOTP, and another by a private citizen. So, I had that forwarded to me three times. I in turn forwarded it to staff and asked them to send it along to all of you.
Right, and we all got a copy of it.
And you all got a copy of it. Yes. Yeah, I can't remember who wanted it three times, but I got it three times.
Fine, I think that, appreciate that.
Okay.
I think it's back to you.
All right. So, the next item on our agenda is case number G1. This was postponed to this evening. It, actually, I've got the wrong agenda as usual. I'll get the right one. I keep going back and forth. Yes, I knew it was G1. It's the municipality of Anchorage is a petitioner. In both of mine, it says the municipality is the petitioner. What, what's...
I think it's E.
Oh, I'm going to E. No. Well, okay, E. That's what I'm looking for, E1. It's Title 21 rewrite of Chapter 7, and that matter is before us. Mr. Aishem?
Madam Chair, we've had some additional information that Ms. Yoschmar and the planning staff are going to be providing, and we stuck this on the agenda tonight in hopes that we could get to it if we thought we could, and I think it's important that we get those photographs that they're going to take before we make our final decision on this. So, it's not a crisis situation as far as approving this this evening, so I move that we postpone this probably until the first meeting in May, if it fits, or as soon as we can get it in June, rather.
Would probably be the second meeting in June, I would think, from looking at the June calendar.
Yes, the June 8th.
It dates certain June 8th.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Is there any objection? Hearing none, that is postponed until on June 8th. Okay. Now, moving along. The next item before us is G1. I will get it right this time. And again, the petitioner is the municipality of Anchorage. It's for an amendment to the Long Range Transportation Plan to delete the Knick Arm Crossing. The Planning and Zoning Commission is, functions as a citizen advisory committee to AMAT, but it's also part of the Planning Commission's regular duties to provide input, both certainly to the Assembly and other agencies, on transportation matters where it impacts land use and land use decisions and growth patterns in Anchorage. So, that's what our primary charge is, is, has to do with land use and how land use develops in our community. So, this evening, we will be wearing our AMAT's Citizen Advisory Committee hat as we look at, as we look at this, and we'll be having the hearing this evening. If you're representing a group, you will have five minutes to testify. If you're speaking as an individual, it will be three minutes. If you have written comments or testimony, you can certainly submit that. The public comment period has not closed, nor will it officially close. I believe the date is May 27th. Is that correct, Mr. Wilber? He's nodding his head yes. So, even after tonight's hearing, you still can submit additional written comments or materials to the AMAT staff through that date, May 27th. But we're here to hear your ideas, your thoughts, your comments, regardless of what they are, and it's your time. And our task is to listen and to hear what you have to say and what your thoughts are about this proposal. And having outlined our role and those rules, I'm going to invite the staff now to provide us with a brief overview before I open the hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kind of a brief summary of where we are and our purpose here. On April 23rd, the AMAT's Policy Committee had released a draft, proposed amendments to remove the Knick Arm Crossing from the Anchorage Long Range Transportation Plan on May 20, on April 23rd, and comments closing next week. Included in that proposed amendment are removal of the Knick Arm Crossing, as well as a necessary need to update our existing long-range transportation plan to meet new planning factors, including financial constraint, and all of that information is available through the Commission. It is available online, provided copies to all of the libraries, and for those folks who want copies of that information. We did have an open house earlier today. We were gracious enough to have some folks from Knick Arm Bridge and Toll Authority, near Alaskia Railroad, and some others, to help answer questions and address those. To date, we've seen a lot of comments, and again, the Commission has copies of those. We have extra copies of those available for the members of the public, available over here on the counter. An issue response as of May 8th, as of Saturday, we've received almost 100 additional comments. So, and we'll continue to receive those comments and respond to them. Our, excuse me, the purpose of the amendment and a lot of the questions that have concerns about why the bridge should come out, the Assembly passed a resolution last fall, provided it to the Policy Committee, and that is based on that direction from the Assembly and direction from the Policy Committee, that's why we're here tonight. The staff is looking at the comments, and many of the comments, both for and against the project, are related to whether or not that's a benefit to the Anchorage area regarding our existing land and concerns for the ability to do redevelopment infill. We've also had comments for the necessary need for the bridge to open up more land, because there is a belief that we are running out of land here in the Anchorage area, particularly on the industrial land use side. So, a lot of the comments in that arena. The cost of the bridge itself, and for those who might not be aware, currently, the bridge in the long-range plan stands on its own financial merits. Conditions in the long-range plan say that no other state or federal funds would be used to build the bridge. The bridge would be used, would be built with the funds it has or through some other public-private partnership with the toll. So, again, there's been a lot of comments and questions, so we just turn it over to the Commission and hope that we hear some good comments tonight, and that we'll just, we will commit to respond to everything that we hear this evening, and hope that we hear some new issues that we don't already have. And again, if you don't have a copy of the comments we've got or a response to them, please provide, they're available over here, so I'll turn it over to the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilber. I will open the public hearing at this time, and before I invite the first person to come forward, I will announce that we will be continuing the public hearing from tonight until June 1st, and we will be hearing testimony on June 1st as well. So, but a person only gets to testify once, so if you testify this evening, you will not be able to testify on June 1st. It's your choice. And we're anxious to hear from you whenever you decide to testify. So, having said that, the public hearing is open, and I would invite the first person that would like to talk to us to come forward and come up to the microphone, and just make sure the little green light is lit up. You might have to push the button to get the green light to light up, so, before you talk to us. Don't everybody get up and run at once. Mr. Parker, I see you getting ready to get up. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the oldest person in the room, I will utilize my age to secure some priority. This is the first time I've been on this project, and I was against it the previous three times, when I was a fed, when I was a state, and when I was a consultant of the Legislature, and this time, I'm still against it. I find I agree totally with your comments, as they have been incorporated in here from the first time, as its effect on Anchorage, and regarding the regional effects, which were brought out in the letter from Deputy Commissioner Frank in his letter to AMAT. I used to teach regional planning at the university here, and I still sit up on it, went through some of the regional plans from the various state departments, and nothing that was presented to us in any of the many meetings, whether AMAT or any of the other earlier meetings, can convey the regional planning. The land shortage, I think you have a better hand than I certainly than I do, but if you look at a map, out of there a photo of Anchorage in 1970, and one today, I don't see an over forming growth of high density that would indicate that there's not a reasonable amount of land left for growth in Anchorage, and nobody's predicting high growth anyway. So, you know, unless they're conceding something about where the Matsu port is going to go, or what possible exports would be made from there, see, anything I could find is that you could even get into is a regional plan, and I have hearings who heard nothing about that. So, failing the proponents of this to come forward... So failing the proponents of this to come forward with that, I'd have no reason to support it. And of course, financing seems to have fallen apart, and we have this glorious picture of having a toll bridge and so forth, and all of a sudden, they're talking, I don't know what you mean, state, no, what you mean, and so forth. It's me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Parker? Looks like Ms. Pease has a question for you.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Parker, I don't think I've seen the letter from Mr. Frank. I'll certainly look for it. But given your regional planning perspective, what do you feel the regional impacts are of building or not building?
I didn't quite get that.
I'm sorry. I wanted to tap into your regional planning perspective and ask, based on your long expertise with regional planning issues, what you felt the regional planning impacts, or the regional impacts are, whether it's built or not?
I could detect no real regional impacts at all in anything I heard from the proponents. So in my own research, I must say, you know, if you go directly west from the bridge, you're in hilly river country, which was pretty wet. And if you go north, you don't do anything to exist in highly enriched system doesn't already do for you, whatever land system does for you. So I just couldn't detect any regional impacts at all in this, not for that kind of price. Yeah, we do it.
Yeah, no, okay, that's, yeah, we do have that one. I thought you were referring to Representative or Legislator Frank, so, okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out for that, Mr. Parker. Yes, ma'am, you were getting ready to jump up.
Good evening. My name is Anita Simon, and I'm here representing the Department of Transportation. I primarily want to make sure that the letter dated today, May 18th, written by Frank Richards is in the end of the record.
It has been.
Okay. Since you just received it, with your permission, I'd like to read the letter into the record. I think I can do that in less than five minutes. Have you all had a chance to read the letter?
I have. I don't know about others, but you're certainly welcome to read it into the record.
Okay, I'll try to set a record.
Okay.
Dear Chairman Key, I am ready to express DOTPuff's concern about the recent proposal by the AMAT's Policy Committee to remove the Kinnikarm Crossing Project from the long-range transportation plan. I reviewed the two letters you received from Andrew Neimack, Executive Director of the Kinnikarm Bridge and Toll Authority Cabada, each dated April 30th, 2009. DOTPuff shares many of the concerns raised by Mr. Neimack. I want, however, to share with you DOTPuff's specific concerns, many of which involve the rest and seemingly injudicious manner in which the Policy Committee has chosen to proceed. The Kinnikarm Crossing is a major project with both regional and statewide significance. DOTPuff strongly believes the decision as to whether the project should remain in the LRTP should be made in a legally defensible fashion following established public process timelines and processes. As you know, removal of the project from the LRTP would make the project far more difficult, if not impossible, to construct. Before such an important step is taken, ample opportunity for input by the public and for study and reflection by policy makers is required. Unfortunately, that is not how the Policy Committee chose to proceed. In violation of the AMAT's operating agreement, the Technical Advisory Committee was not given an opportunity to study the proposal and has made no recommendation to the Policy Committee regarding the proposed amendment. This is unprecedented. The Policy Committee's failure to obtain guidance from the TAC is a major concern for DOTPuff. The municipality's Planning and Zoning Commission will be considering this issue and could take action before the close of the public comment period, depriving the Commission of the public input it needs to make a meaningful decision. The municipal symbol will also be forced to make an accelerated review, which is not conducive to the reflective process warranted by such a major decision. The manner in which the Policy Committee is proceeding is not only a violation of the contractual commitments made to the state, it also violates federal law. As all members of the Policy Committee should be aware, federal law requires AMATs to engage in a continuing cooperative and comprehensive transportation planning process. The steady shift in direction on the Kinnikarm Crossing Project without adequate consultation with the public or the state and without the input of the TAC fails to meet this standard. Clearly, moving the continuing cooperative and comprehensive planning standards is important with respect to any proposed amendment to the LRTP, although not required by federal law, but it is particularly critical here because the Kinnikarm Crossing is not simply a local project. If constructed, the Kinnikarm Crossing will have a major impact well outside of the municipality and AMAT's geographical boundaries. Federal law specifically requires the LRTP to emphasize projects and facilities that serve important national and regional transportation functions. In this case, the legal requirement requires careful consideration of how removal of the Kinnikarm Crossing Project affects other parts of the transportation network. At this point, neither the TAC nor the Policy Committee has performed the careful review required by federal law. DOTPuff is also concerned by the failure of the Policy Committee to follow its recently adopted procedures regarding input from citizens, transportation industry representatives, and public agencies. Federal law requires AMATs not only to adopt such a policy, but also to follow it. The Policy Committee's actions would appear to violate this federal requirement as well. The Policy Committee's willingness to violate federal law has a potential for impacts beyond just the Kinnikarm Crossing. In order to obtain federal funding, the state and AMATs must certify that all federal requirements have been met. At this point, it does not appear to be true. We trust that any deficiencies will be remedied and that federal funding will remain available, but the Policy Committee should keep in mind that DOTPuff takes the legal requirements for obtaining federal funding extremely serious. Federal requirements aside, DOTPuff does not understand the need to rush the decision on whether to amend the LRTP. There are no immediate deadlines, and there are apparent reasons that the federally mandated procedures cannot be followed in this case. That is particularly true, given the pending change in the municipality's administration. There is no reason to deprive the incoming mayor an opportunity to study and weigh in on the proposal, but DOTPuff does not presume to question the motives of the Policy Committee's members. The appearance created is that certain members of the Policy Committee are attempting, for political reasons, to force a decision on the Kinnikarm Crossing before their new mayor is sworn in. If true, that would increase the possibility that the $31 million spent on the project to date would have to be repaid to the federal government.
Could you, do you have much more left?
About one paragraph in a sentence.
Okay.
That obviously is a huge concern for DOTPuff and the state, and should be for AMAT and the municipalities as well. DOTPuff urges the Policy Committee to reconsider the aggressive and legally insufficient schedule it has set for a decision on the proposal. If the Policy Committee wishes to consider amending the LRTP to remove the Kinnikarm Crossing, it must do so in an overdue manner, according to established procedures rather than the current abbreviated process. The TAC must be given a full opportunity to review the proposal and formulate its recommendations to the committee, and the public and the state must be given a full opportunity to express their views. The Municipal P&amp;Z Commission and the Assembly must then be given adequate time to gather information and consider what the recommendations should be, and we then have the Policy Committee be prepared to make a well-informed decision on the proposed course of action. Sincerely, Frank Richards, Deputy Commissioner, Highways and Public Facilities. With that, I would like to say that if there are questions by the Commission about the further questions about DOT's position, I would, if you try to answer them, I'd take them with me and return with an answer to your next meeting.
Okay. Let's see, Ms. Pease, are you in the queue?
Yes, I am.
And then Mr. Phelps.
I have, I have two questions. I think probably both of them would merit a later response. In this letter, it states that the TAC and the Policy Committee need to consider how the Kinnikarm Crossing Project affects other parts of the transportation network. And I guess I would just pose the question whether the Planning and Zoning Commission might also have a role in commenting on how the inclusion or deletion affects the transportation network, given that the long-range transportation plan is part of the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan that we implement. So I think that statement might, should include the Planning and Zoning's role there too. The other question I have relates to the possibility that the $41 million spent on the project to date would have to be repaid in the federal government. I guess I'd be interested in hearing more about that potential obligation, and also whether the funds that had originally come to the state as an earmark, whether that money still is committed to the Kinnikarm Crossing, and if this project were deleted, would that money be available for other projects? So both, would there be a repay obligation, and if it were deleted, would there be additional monies for other parts of the LRTP?
And that may be something you need to come back with a written response, unless there's someone here that can answer the questions.
The, my understanding, and on AMAT's part, I'm fairly, fairly new to the position, but my understanding is that if a project is shoved before the bail process is completed, and unless it has, a no-bank alternative has been selected, then the state could be required to pay the money back that's been spent to date. I might ask, do you feel that's correct, David? Sorry, I've got an associate here that could...
David Post, also with DOT. And the repay obligation is dependent upon our ability to go ahead and show that, or the ability to avoid repaying the $41 million is dependent upon our ability to show that there has been a change in the status of this project that is not based on either finances or a political shift.
Could you repeat that again? If this...
In order to avoid repaying the $41 million, we need to be able to go ahead and substantiate that something has changed that would basically, something other than a political shift or a shift in sort of the financials of the project as well.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Phelps?
Because the first question is, is that a deputy commissioner signed this. Is there one or two deputy commissioners inside of ADOT?
He is the deputy commissioner for highways, the highways.
Okay. And this represents the position of the commissioner as well?
It's signed by the deputy commissioner, so I would assume it represents his position.
Okay. Actually, I've never actually seen a letter like this before. This is kind of a very unusual letter. Normally, you have the state involved in applying process in a cooperative fashion, and usually, issues like this are worked out in some sort of cooperative way. So it's quite unusual to actually see a letter of this type. And I used to be involved in transportation and planning a long time ago, and I would not like to receive a letter like this, actually. The questions I have do not have to be answered this evening. In fact, I prefer that they not be answered this evening. I prefer instead that you provide a response to us in the June 1st meeting. Let me note the areas that I would like to get a more thorough response from the department. And most of these are on page two. Okay. There's a sentence that says, "In this case, meaning this legal requirement requires careful consideration of how removal of the Crossland Project affects other parts of the transportation network. At this point, neither the TAC nor the Policy Committee have performed this careful review." So if in fact, there's been no simulation testing of the effect upon the removal of the transportation system, I would like to have a greater articulation of that particular evaluation. Usually, you do testing. Usually, a sensitivity analysis you do, and I would presume they have done that. And if they have not done that, I would like to know that they did not do that. The second question is, and it concerns the following paragraph, ADOT is also concerned by the failure of the Policy Committee to follow its recently adopted procedures regarding input from citizens. And it goes on to say, "Federal law requires AMATs to follow the policy," essentially, just adopt it. Can you provide to me an explanation of what procedures were violated specifically? And then go into your document, identify the areas of inconsistency, and note those directly, please. The following, well, third paragraph is, "The statement that the Policy Committee's willingness to violate federal law has a potential for impacts." First of all, I don't think I want to deal with the issue of whether it's willing to violate federal law, but I'd like to know what federal law is being violated. So there's an intention or the statement that federal law is being violated. I would like to know which law or CFR requirements are violating. And I guess most importantly, what I'm concerned about is that typically, in the recent issue, that TAC has an evaluation of something of this scale and scope, usually, well before the Policy Committee has taken action on this. And so from what I'm gathering, ADOT believes there has not been proper TAC review and analysis. And so what I'd like then is a further description as to why TAC involvement with that analysis has not been satisfactory. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from Commissioners?
I forgot one.
Okay, I didn't see you in the queue. Okay.
And this is for clarification, it maybe would go to staff, but my understanding is that at the, I guess, April 23rd Policy Committee meeting, what they did is they started the process of looking at this. They didn't make a decision, so that this hearing and others would be part of this. So, and my understanding is that the Technical Advisory Committee had three meetings and presumably could have more on this. So am I wrong on what happened? I mean, the AMAT's Policy Committee said, "Let's start the process now with the public, the public process," and the TAC's input is part of that. Is that correct?
I think the question that was before the TAC was whether to release it for public review, and when that action wasn't taken, the Policy Committee then proceeded to release it without the recommendation by the TAC.
Okay, so this Chapter 13, they, is that where we release Chapter 13 that we have in front of us?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Shomura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chip, what would be some examples, other than political or financial, that would justify us not having to repay the $41 million? Because you said it's, obviously can't be based on political or financial, so what are some of those reasons?
I guess, to be honest, there was a lot of effort to go ahead and look at the conditions previously when it was put into the plan, and I'm not prepared to go ahead and say what are the changes, because as of yet, those are the two primary ones we've been able to identify.
Okay, Mr. Eishem.
Madam Chair, in regards to paying back that $41 million, I would really like to have the paragraph and line number quoted on that, where that is in federal regulations or the law, or wherever it came from. I'd like to, I'd like that explained to me in great detail.
Maybe we can get copies of those citations also. They probably aren't that long. Any further questions from Commissioners? Ms. Pease?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. I think my second question might have gotten lost, but of the original money that came as an earmark, and then was given just as a lump of money with no earmark attached, is there some portion left of that that would be allocated to other LRTP projects if the Kinnikarm Crossing were deleted at this point? Because I think it was more than $44 million that was allocated.
Through the chair, and I hope you don't mind me stepping poorly consistently, but what was originally designated an earmark was later given flexibility and was an earmark in my memory. So those monies are able to be spent on whatever project on a statewide basis at this point in time. And it's, that does point to the $41 million as well, since it was more or less solely directed towards that one project.
So if I can follow up, has the rest of the earmark been spent, or has it been held for continued work on the Kinnikarm Crossing? And would portions of it become available for other projects if the Kinnikarm Crossing were deleted?
I think we're going to have to get back with you on that.
Yes, please do, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Phelps has an additional question.
Actually, it deals with the funding issue, and I fail to mention this in terms of the listing of issues I want to have responses to previously. The statement is made that there's a possibility that funds could be lost. I would like to know specifically...
I would like to know specifically, under what conditions it could be lost? And then, I'd like to know what conditions would have to be met or exist for them not to be lost? In other words, how to, if we wish to delete the project, how do we ensure that in fact we do it in such a way as is consistent with federal requirements as relates to funding aspects? And I guess the other part of it too is that, um, again, it's, it's quite unusual to see a letter like this from the state. Yet, what I'd like to find out from the state is, besides these procedural concerns, what is the state's underlying basic concern? Is it really procedural in nature, or is it something else? If it's really procedural in nature, we should know what the procedural errors are and deal with them. If it's something else, we need to know what the something else is.
I, I think, uh, at this time, it is, um, largely procedural. Um, once again, the AMAS operating agreement does very clearly say that the TAC shall be responsible for AMAS transportation plans, programs, air quality plan, development reviews, new recommendations to the Municipal Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, the Assembly and the AMAS Policy Committee. It does not say that the TAC shall be responsible for plan development, air review, or recommendations. There are some significant potential repercussions that I think may add at least a bit more scrutiny. Once again, the TAC had one actual, um, scheduled meeting, uh, to go ahead and act on the, um, proposed draft amendment. Uh, there was a work session, and there was a continuation of the meeting, but it was basically just a one-month period at a time, which is the reason that the TAC was unable to bring forward a recommendation.
Um, are, are you done with your questioning? Uh, I just happen to have a copy of the operating agreement in front of me, and, um, section five point three point one says that the AMAS Technical Advisory Committee is subordinate to the AMAS Policy Committee. So, if they're subordinate to it, that means to me that if the Policy Committee makes a decision that is different from what the normal course of business might be, that the Policy Committee may have the ability to do that. I'm not suggesting that's what occurred here, or that, that would be okay. I'm just reading from the operating agreement that they are, in fact, subordinate to the Policy Committee, whatever that means. I'm just pointing that out. Um, so, you might want to, you know, maybe that's something we need to get some interpretation on as well. Any, are there any further questions? Bruce, were you back in the queue, or did I just neglect to remove your name? Okay. Uh, it looks like no more questions for you folks. Thank you for coming out this evening. Yes, Lois, you may be next.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, and, uh, other commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Lois Epstein. I'm an engineer, and I'm also director of the Alaska Transportation Priorities Project. Um, I do serve on the Technical Advisory Committee, as well as a representative of the Citizens Air Quality Advisory Group. Um, the Alaska Transportation Priorities Project, or ATPP, represents conservation organizations, businesses, and individuals interested in promoting sensible transportation systems and policies in Alaska. In my previous capacity as an engineer with Cook and Wackeepo, another conservation organization, I was, uh, very involved in Kinnick Arm Bridge scoping, uh, during the federal environmental impact statement process. And I drafted several letters arguing that a pro-growth, inexpensive alternative to the bridge, which the Federal Highway Administration should examine, would consist of commuter rail, car pools and van pool increases ferry across Kinnick Arm, and better public transportation in Anchorage, to ensure that commuters could get around town once they got to town. Uh, the Federal Highway Administration chose not to analyze this alternative, unfortunately, but we still think it's a viable and good option for the region. If I may just spend a moment to answer some of your most recent questions, um, with respect to the earmark, it was de-eemarked by Congress, and the state chose to give ninety-three million dollars in, uh, towards the Kinnick Arm Bridge. Uh, there was some state match money, so left over is about sixty million dollars left, and that would be distributed to projects, uh, in the national highway system around the state, but AMAS would get a portion of that, and that could go to meet some project needs in the long-range transportation plan. Um, in addition, um, I do want to answer Commissioner Yoshimura's question, that one example of the type of change that could happen, that could affect whether the, a project is viable, is whether another federal agency's action or statute would trump this one. And the bluebait whale has been recently listed as an endangered species, which could, and most likely will have, and I encourage you to talk to the folks at the National Marine Fisheries Service, because they did not approve the preferred alternative. They said that that, that a longer bridge would be needed in order to, uh, ensure the habitat protection for the bluebait whale and the salmon. Uh, so, that's, that's an example. The Corps of Engineers also is doing its own analysis to see whether the bridge would affect the port of Anchorage. One core project can affect another, so that's another potential problem with the current bridge design. But I'll get to my comments now. Um, in your sensible, uh, two thousand and seven resolution, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission made some very solid findings that still apply. Uh, ATPP's comments on resolution two thousand and seven dash ten are, first, the independent engineers who issued a cost estimate, uh, for the Kinnick Arm Bridge in January two thousand and nine, said the project's phase one cost would be six hundred and eighty-six million, uh, somewhat higher than the numbers that are in resolution two thousand and seven dash ten, so you might want to change that. Uh, phase one, um, it would be, the engineers also said that there is, quote unquote, extraordinary risk associated with that value. This means that the cost could be significantly greater, and that the project would not go forward unless the state or the municipalities took on some of that financial risk. That, that's part of the analysis from the independent engineering group that DOT hired to look at the cost numbers. Uh, this information validates, uh, number two in resolution two thousand and seven dash ten, which talks about those cost uncertainties. Uh, second, there would be more regional economic growth as, uh, as, uh, considered in number six of two thousand and seven dash ten. Um, this was verified in the federal environmental impact statement, which was issued subsequent to the P and Z, uh, Commission's resolution, so that's, that's an update. Uh, third, the private investors that Cabada was counting on have shown little recent interest in funding this project. There no longer is an excess of liquidity worldwide, as there was in two thousand and seven. Um, phase two, which is the Ingrah-Gamble connection, uh, now needs to be paid for by Cabada or by the state. Um, according to, uh, number fifteen of resolution two thousand and seven dash ten, quote, "The Ingrah-Gamble connection across Ship Creek is a critical component of the project needed to reduce the amount of traffic through downtown," end quote. Without the private investors, Cabada needs to produce a financial plan, which has not done, even for just phase one of the project, much less for phase two.
Can you sum up for us?
Uh, sure, and I will be sharing, and...
There are some questions for you.
Okay. Um, I, I'll end up, yes. I have two other, other points that I wanted to make with respect to the, uh, your existing resolution.
Okay. Someone may ask questions about that. Um, are there question, Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, I, I, it seems that you're running from something. Um, what I would like is that if you could give us a, you know, a digital version of that, because I would prefer that. Thank you.
Are there further questions from commission members?
Yes, I, I would be interested...
Okay. Ms. Yoshimura got in the queue before you did.
That's my way. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'm curious, based upon your experience...
Is your microphone on, Ms. Yoshimura?
Through the chair.
Thanks.
Uh, I am curious, based upon your experience, if you could comment upon the idea that Anchorage is not suffering from a lack of land, but rather a lack of appropriate infrastructure, i.e. roads, water, and sewer, to develop, uh, our remaining industrial and residential land?
Uh, I think that's a good question for, um, Mike Menzey, who had a column on May fourteenth, a compass piece in the Anchorage Daily News, talking about the land issue. Um, that's been brought up as, the lack of industrial land has been brought up, uh, as a concern. It was a recent study, and he has analyzed that study and said that that is, in fact, not a, a real problem for Anchorage right now. Um, it was one of the justifications for the Kinnick Arm Bridge, the need for additional industrial land, and I think that's been debunked, um, by this most recent study, as I, I would, I would argue, almost every justification has been debunked, um, and there isn't a need, and the financial, uh, the, the financial, um, methods that were proposed for the bridge have also been, uh, progressively getting, going away as well. So, we're really in a tight position now. We don't have a lot of, um, a, a lot, a good, strong rationale to move forward with this bridge at this time.
Okay. Thanks. Ms. Pease?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in your, uh, letter, which was in our packet, I, I see you did add a number about the sixty million remaining, so thank you. Um, then, I had a question on, um, your statement that Cabada stated in two thousand and eight that the Ingrah-Gamble connection would not be the responsibility of private partners. Um, is that something, this might be to staff as well. At this point, do we know if there's any likelihood that Cabada would be funding that connection?
Uh, through the chair, the, the question about whether or not Cabada would be funding the connection...
The remaining Ingrah-Gamble connection, which you described, I guess the state, AMAS would fund to Whitney Road, but then to the terminus of the, uh, KIC approach, is there another chunk there that Cabada has said the private partners will not fund?
I, I don't know. I would, uh, I would defer to Kinnick Arm Bridge, but I think that the intent is, is that they would, they would fund that connection, and I think their con, their, uh, consideration is based on the level of traffic on AC, which would then, and this is their position, uh, if the, if the traffic on AC got to a point where it was high enough to need the, uh, Ingrah-Gamble connection, then, then Cabada or the investors would be paying for that. But I would yield to Cabada to give you a more detailed and current answer.
Okay. I guess that would be good to have follow-up on whether the current financial plan for bridge funding includes the unfunded parts of the connection to Ingrah-Gamble, and, um, whether the, whether the private partners will be paying for that.
Okay. It looks like Mr. Isham has a question for you next.
Yes, Ms. Epstein, uh, you indicated that you had a couple of other additional, uh, comments on our earlier findings. Could you, uh, expand on that a little bit, please?
Uh, with respect to number eighteen in resolution two thousand and seven, uh, we now know, as I mentioned, that there's a need for a longer span to protect the Cook and Wackeepo bluebait whales. Um, according to the federal environmental impact statement, this would cost approximately fifty percent more. So, that's one issue. Uh, the second, um, I also briefly mentioned that I would suggest that the commission might want to consider adding a finding based on, uh, Mike Menzey's analysis of the recent, uh, land use projections, and the, uh, showing that there is ample land for industrial development for several decades in Anchorage.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, are there any further questions for Ms. Epstein? Um, Ms. Pease? And then, Mr. Riddleton, are you going to be in the queue?
It says I am. Do you want me to try again?
Huh. I don't see you. You're hiding.
Maybe I punched my wife's.
You may have, you know you could have, because you're not lighting up.
Nope. It says me, you, or John.
Okay. Well, Ms. Pease?
Yes, um, for the record, you touched on this a little bit in your letter, but for the record, what evidence is there that, um, that longer span would be required, and who would have the authority to require it?
Uh, the National Marine Fisheries Service, uh, which is part of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, has sent to the Federal Highway Administration a letter following issuance of the federal environmental impact statement in terms of rope acronyms, and so it's very unwieldy. Uh, but, uh, in that letter, and I'd be happy to provide that to the commission, it does say that they, uh, prefer the more action alternative, which means when they are, uh, going to be consulted to, uh, to issue some level of approval, I'm not sure it's exactly known as a permit, uh, they are going to say that their current design is a problem for them. They have attended the, um, most recent AMAS Policy Committee meeting on April twenty-third. I don't believe they were asked any questions, but they were there to serve as a resource for the Policy Committee.
Okay. It looks like Mr. Riddleton has a question for you.
While I was messing with this, you might have hit on some pieces of what I was going to ask. So, we've heard that there were three technical advisory committee meetings on this, and then we also heard that there was only one.
Uh, yes, uh, there was one official meeting, and there was a work session with me, but continuation of the work session as well. So, um, you know, it depends on the definition of what a meeting is.
Excellent.
Okay. And Ms. Pease is back in the queue.
One final question. In making the, um, assessment of whether taking this project off, the LRTP would have any effect on the transportation network, I might be interested in, in looking at the, um, alternative transportation program that your agency submitted, apparently, to FHWA, um, and perhaps the, the, um, Policy Committee would too. Where would, uh, I find a copy of that, your alternative that submitted by Alaska Transportation Priorities?
Uh, and actually, several organizations submitted it. I believe it was the summer of two thousand and six, some, sometime, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but yeah, I'd be happy to share those letters with the commission.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further for Ms. Epstein? No more questions for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're, you're welcome. We'll look forward to receiving those materials. Anyone else that wishes to submit testimony this evening? Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Kessel, and I'm speaking as a private citizen this evening. Over two years ago, oh, excuse me, sorry, over two years ago, as you guys know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the UN, they voted against adding the Kinnick Arm Crossing to the LRTP. Uh, the prescient reasons cited against the ambition included, "The project poses more serious risks to the economy than it proposes benefits, lack of funding for necessary connector roads, questionable traffic in revenue models, serious danger that the project will not be able to fund itself, funding risks that will be borne by the public, the project is inconsistent with the Anchorage twenty-twenty plan, the Truver Act Eagle River, uh, excuse me, Truver Act Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, and the LRTP. Timing, the, the timing of the construction does not appear to fit Anchorage's current needs, and the timing of the portion, ironically, the timing of the portion two, uh, two thousand and seven seemed first, which is exactly what we're hearing from Cabada, saying that the timing of telling the, uh, telling the, um, Kinnick Arm Crossing from the LRTP seems first, so it seems to be both sides. These concerns were raised two years ago at the height of the economic cycle. In an attempt to mitigate the concerns raised by P and Z and others, the Assembly did add two, two conditions to the LRTP. Section forty, no funding currently planned for the implementation of the existing, uh, LRTP shall be used to support construction and maintenance of the Kinnick Arm Crossing, and, and no additional local funds will be allocated for any part of that project. Forty is recognition that the highway-to-highway project of Ingrah-Gamble connection across Ship Creek are critical to the Kinnick Arm Crossing, and as a part of the effort, it is understood that the Ingrah-Gamble connection will be included in part of the, um, funding process for the Kinnick Arm Crossing." Now, two years later... Now, two years later, way back before you testified all over again, and economic situations changed dramatically, and the following has occurred. No federal funds to support the bridge, they're disapproving political climate, there was the Public-Private Partnership Initiative with the Kinnick Arm Crossing, 1240. The RFP that they, the draft RFP that they had, excuse me, that they had sent out to two large economic consortiums has languished. One of those consortiums, McQuill, is teetering on the edge of bankruptcy. And in an effort to save the public-private partnership in the RFP, Cabada actually pulled the Ingraham-Gamble connection from funding from that draft RFP, so it's strictly phase one that was going to be included.
Can you sum up for us?
Sure. Basically, as you can tell, I would like to encourage the Planning and Observing Commission to remove the Kinnick Arm Crossing, to recommend the removal of the Kinnick Arm Crossing from the LRTP.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions for you, Ms. Kessler. Are there any questions for Ms. Kessler this evening? Apparently not. We appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
It's gone.
I can't wire you, keep you awake with all my visuals and-
I'm sorry. Do you know when Elmo's going to be back?
He'll be back.
It's rare?
He'll be back soon, I'm sure.
Oh. No, we'll do without it, but we generally need to have it out here, just as word for staff, because we often have petitioners or witnesses that need to use it.
My name's Dan Holmes, and I think you spoke at the beginning, I think you meant to say that P&amp;Z is required to look at transportation issues because they do impact-
They do impact.
Not when.
No, they do impact land use.
Yes, not when.
I did misspeak.
This is a really, this is not a politically expedited amendment, because it simply will undo what was a political move to put the bridge into the LRTP in the first place. And it was likely put on in the first place in a much quicker timeframe than it's taking you to take it off. You guys are too experienced to lead us to tell you the bridge violates almost every part of the 2020 plan, which, as you all know, has the weight of law behind it, and which the LRTP is a subcomponent of. The city's excellent 29-page document, which I can't show you from November of '06, which I do hope you have though, gives all the reasons why an amendment shouldn't have been made for this bridge in the first place. There's disruption of the downtown comp plan and the traffic inappropriately placed, which you just passed, that downtown comp plan, and inappropriate place traffic on Allen Street, a further fragmenting pedestrian environment and the integration of the new museum, destruction of government-held neighborhoods, definite lower violation of 2020 to do that. The bridge amendment is and was accompanied by inaccurate information on how it reduces, won't reduce travel time, and the impacts on opening land, which would only serve to lower our property values here, promote urban sprawl, expensive urban sprawl, and would actually eliminate some of our industrial tax base. It would prevent LRTP goals that actually say we should be reducing single occupancy vehicle traffic, and it would take away our sparse funds. There's no funding for the complete street concept that LRTP in 2020 calls for, and if I'm going to run out of time, I'm going to tell you right now, I had a couple more points. Please follow up with your well-documented decision by appearing. One or two of you, well-spoken people, appear at the assembly to explain your decision, because it makes more of an impression when you're there. And my other points, I'll get too quickly. Money's always been an issue, and there isn't a plan to do anything on the land portion. Please don't kowtow to any procedural threat or having to pay back any funds. I know you will make your decision based on good planning and the original LRTP goals, and if there is a problem about paying back, isn't that the state's problem?
Thank you. Looks like we have questions for you, Ms. Holmes. Ms. Pease?
That was from the last speaker, so I don't-
Oh, was it?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Holmes? You answered all our questions with your testimony. Good job.
Well, you might have the answers.
Who's the next person that would like to testify? Come on down.
My name's Robert Shipley. I'm here tonight as just a, an attentive citizen observer. I do not support leaving the Kinnick Arm Crossing project in the LRTP transportation plan. First reason is that, in my opinion, the financial feasibility is and has been very questionable. I believe the benefits analysis has been well overstated in view of the changing economics and demographics and energy costs that are confronting us all. So I think those projections are probably outdated. Secondly, I think the security, emergency, evacuation benefits that were stated in the proposal are overstated. For example, most of you probably remember a few years ago, in Florida, there was a pending hurricane, so they advised everybody to bail out using evacuation routes on Interstate, and it all came to a massive traffic jam, and nobody got anywhere. So that didn't work very well. And it's possible that the same situation could occur. If this is projected to be such an ideal evacuation, in fact, on page 13 of the, chapter 13, the amendment states that the bridge could be subject to seismic stresses during a potential earthquake, which could diminish its usefulness in such circumstances. So to me, that's an example of probable concurrent events with contradictory results. Thirdly, I think the vague commitment by Cabada to arrange an Ingraham-Gamble connection is questionable, especially in view of some of the prior testimony. For example, this is already an overloaded transit corridor, and so it's curious to me that the Harley-to-Highway project study that has been referred to, which is state and federal funds, has begun concurrently with this Kinnick Arm Crossing project, and especially interesting since the Sunday's condition on page five of this document, numbers E and G refer to no state of federal funds to be used in connection with the Kinnick Arm Crossing, a project. So in summary, there are just too many unanswered questions in my mind for it to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Shipley? Any at all? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out tonight-
Thank you.
-and sharing your opinion with us. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Thomas Pease, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I used to vouch my support for moving the Kinnick Arm Bridge project from the LRTP. Two years ago, this body opposed including the Cape Bridge in the LRTP. I hope Planning and Observing recognizes both the financial and social risks this project poses to Anchorage and votes to remove this project from the LRTP. The bridge project needs to be removed for the factors that have remained constant on this issue, as well as for the changes that have occurred in the last two years. The fourth rail-issue tsunamious project remained unchanged from two years ago. First, the bridge proposal still has no credible cost estimate. Cabada continues to ignore costs of connections to the bridge. Hidden within Cabada's $800,000 estimate are $180,000 more in costs to the city of Anchorage and the Matso Valley. A second factor that's unchanged, this project could award the city's tax base, both through residential development and road housing. Significant property and inventory taxes will be lost to the Matso. A third factor that remains constant from two years ago, the proposed AC corridor remains the preferred alternative, and will negatively impact the downtown core, and many businesses and cultural centers around this corridor, and it will bisect and disturb the neighborhood. In the fore, the project continues to allot the majority of the money needed to pay for the bridge, and in the file, the project still increases rather than decreases commuter time to the core communities in the valley. So what's changed in the last two years that provides even more compelling reasons to remove the bridge from the LRTP? First, there's still no private partner to invest in private-public bridge-building project. In fact, there are only two partners, potential partners in good times, and now they're paid them. The two investment firms show in serious interest, it's my understanding, have lost over 50% of their net value in the current economic recession. In today's economic recession, any financial risks will be shifted to the city and state governments. Another change is slow growth in the valley, which drives into question the growth projections, and in turn, the need for the bridge in the first place. A third change, lighter traffic to the valley translates into less toll revenues and greater financial burden for the taxpayers. And finally, unforeseen design flaws, such as what we saw with the Witty-Town recently, could create alarming costs that are unpredictable. So as you can see, the negative impacts of-
Did you see that first?
Yes. As you can see, the negative impacts of Kinnick Arm Bridge construction that this body acknowledged two years ago remain. Additionally, the change in financial climate makes the risks of this project to the city of Anchorage even greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Pease? Ms. Pease?
Yes, I have a question, which staff might be able to answer, but it comes from his comments. Is there a private partner now? Have the two bidders both, is there a private partner?
Through the chair to Commissioner Pease. As I understand it, there is, but I would yield again to Kinnick Arm Bridge and Total Authority to see if, you know, what their status of those partners are.
Okay. And then the question of slowdown of growth in the valley, is that something we have any numbers on?
I don't believe that we do, but we could look into it.
Okay, that would be good to get. And finally, if I may, you mentioned unchanged design flaws. What in particular? What are you thinking of?
Unforeseen design flaw.
Oh, you said unforeseen, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out this evening. Anyone else? Don't everyone jump up at once? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Pamela Marsh, and I want to speak on behalf of the bridge. And it's a personal reason. I have friends, and they come to visit me, and I'm expecting them in an hour, and sometimes I don't see them for three hours. I actually have a call with state troopers and thought, what's going on? And they say to me, well, there's a closure on the hallway. Everything's fine, and three to four hours later, they'll come back. And anyone who's talked to people that actually live in the valley will tell you that they have experiences when the entire highway is shut down, and they're not able to come to work, they're not able to go home from work. And so, when you think of things in terms of our tax base, well, hopefully, there might be a way in which we could extend the line, so that maybe some of these new developments could be part of the tax base. I'm looking for real-world situations, because it's on a personal level for me, a level in which I have people that I know personally that cannot come in on a timely basis, that it takes time away from their lives and their family and their working situation, as well as the amount of money it costs them to drive. And this is a real situation that I have experienced personally, and so I'd like you to relook at the bridge, and if it's not ruined, it's a matter of if, because if you don't learn, you die. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Marsh? Apparently not. Thank you for coming forward to testify this evening. Appreciate you driving. And did you drive in this evening from the valley?
Not today.
Not today, okay. Is there anyone else that would like to testify this evening? Anyone at all? Nobody else wants to testify tonight. Everybody else is going to wait till June 1st. If everyone's going to wait till June 1st, do commissioners have any further information they'd like between now and June 1st?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like staff to take a look at this May 18th letter from Mr. Richards and get some, I guess, some attorney's opinions on some of the statements that are in here as to liabilities, you know, if we've broken the law, things of that nature. You can just go through and read it and pick that stuff out, and then let's get, let's get our attorney's opinion on what's in here.
Anything further?
Yes, Ms. Pease? Madam Chair, from the public review draft, I had a couple of more points that I hoped could be followed up on. One is on page four. It states that safety lieu expanded the planning factor to be considered, and I wanted to make sure that the proposal meets the, meets the expanded planning factor. Secondly, with regard to the progress that the municipality is trying to make on its public transit program, and also the progress that the regional authority is trying to make, I wondered if we could have a little more information on whether the city has been meeting its transit goals outlined in the LRTP and the comp plan, such as route coverage and express service to the valley, and frequency of bus service. And I think that's, those are the only two questions. Additional questions?
Anything further? Yes, Mr. Reddleton?
Sorry, for staff. The main focus here, of course, is removing the Kinnick Arm Crossing from the LRTP, but this LRTP has also changed in other ways. So when we go through and review this, are we only looking at remove, the amendment to remove the Kinnick Arm Crossing, or are we also looking to say- to remove the Connect Arm Crossing, or are we also looking to say that we approve of the new LRTP?
Through the chair, I would ask, as I mentioned in my early presentation, I would ask for the commission's guidance, because you're not-- you're acting on the amendment. The amendment includes including all the new planning regs and the proposal to move Connect Arm out of the long-range plan. It's not just the Connect Arm, it's all of the new planning requirements that Commissioner Pease noted, and the financial plan that I mentioned is part of my earlier presentation.
So there could be-- there may be other pieces of this Chapter 13 that we'd have maybe recommendations on that are separate from specifically Connect Arm Crossing, and that's something legitimately we should look at?
Through the chair, I think Chapter 13 that was released includes the new planning requirements. Would ask you to take a look at those. It includes the funding tables provided separately. We provided those, and then some discussion about why the Connect Arm should be removed. So it's the-- we'd ask the commission to look at all of those matters, please.
Okay, great, thanks.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, if we're looking at Chapter 13, on page 38, there is this paragraph that says, "The municipality questioned the regional benefits," and then there are a number of concerns about environment and effect on public transportation. And the MRA clearly expected the final EIS to address these concerns and other concerns. Has the MRA expressed its opinion that these concerns have all been addressed?
Through the chair, Commissioner Pease, I think there are portions of this document that, as the technical committee and staff were working on, they had felt that some of the content may be more relevant for ANIPA rather than LRTP. And I think the issue is this. When the final environmental impact statement came out, or when the draft came out, the municipality of Anchorage provided some comments on and concerns with that environmental document. As the final environmental impact statement was provided, they were all addressed, but they were not addressed to the satisfaction of the municipality. So one view of it is, yes, we addressed your concerns, but our approach is not going to be the way that you recommended at municipality or agency A or B. But to claim they weren't addressed probably would not be entirely accurate. Were they addressed to the satisfaction of the municipality? Probably not. So again, I do believe that this Chapter 13 will be thinned down a little bit. There's a lot of information in there that's really relevant to the NIPA process and not so much to the LRTP process, and I think staff will take an opportunity to address that. I think most of the technical committee members were in concurrence with that, but again, we have not finished our work, so we'll do our best to make the amendment relevant just to the LRTP issues, not so much to NIPA.
I would suggest that on this list, on page 38, there are a couple of categories that are relevant to planning and zoning's implementation of the comp plan and the LRTP, and those would include the automobile dependency and the higher vehicle miles traveled and the whether the Connect Arm Crossing supports and integrates with public transportation. And non-- well, there's a list there. Some of those do, I think, come into what we should be considering. I approve you.
I would agree, Commissioner Pease.
Okay, Mr. Phelps?
I guess I have some confusion here. What I'm looking at in Chapter 13, this document here, is not the LRTP. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is just the chapter that addresses the bridge. It does not include all the other chapters, which are in the long-range plan, which you should have, as when you joint-commissioned, you should have a copy of that.
Well, that's my understanding, but when I look at Table 8-1, it talks about all the road improvement projects. And this looks like a listing of all the projects that are included inside the LRTP, or it would seem so. Are these all related to the bridge? Does it look like it?
Through the chair, no, these are projects, as part of this amendment process, we would need to update these tables in Chapter-- in Chapter 8 of the long-range plan. We just reflected which projects had been completed and which ones are still ongoing, so.
So this is really a status report, then? So we're not really trying to deal with the issue of what are recommend projects in this review?
That is correct.
We could go further if you want, because we're going to characterize the commission as a commission. I'm trying to really clarify what you're trying to get out of this. And my understanding is that you want our reaction on two things. The Connect Arm Crossing, feasibility, appropriateness of that. And the second part, are the procedures related to transportation planning, or how would you describe that?
The second part I would characterize as the new planning requirements, including the financial plan.
Okay. Now, specifically, are in this document the new planning requirements?
If you just give me a moment, I'll find it for you. If you look on page nine, I believe it starts with the planning requirements, and you see on page 10, there's a discussion about safety on page, and it continues through 11. On page 12, there's some discussion about security. And as you read on, environment, and you'll-- so that's kind of the key new planning factors that are available there.
Okay, so these factors probably derive from some new federal requirement. Is that correct?
They were-- that took effect in December of last year.
Okay. So from the commission's perspective, you're asking us essentially for two things. I hate to clarify this, but I guess in my own mind, I need to review this. Again, the first issue is the bridge, and the second part is the wording, the appropriateness, the recommendations that are specific in this document in pages nine to 18. Is that correct?
If I could, yeah, actually from six, starting with climate change, environmental justice.
Okay.
And I think we've heard some good comments tonight about some other documents that the commission members are aware of, that we'll make sure that are included in here.
But again, you're making us specific comments from us, if we have any, on that aspect that's known in terms of procedures that begin on page six. And I guess go through page about 17, 18?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pease, you have something else to add?
Yes, I heard Mr. Wilber say, "In addition to looking at Chapter 13, we need to look at the financial plan." Is that anything different from the financial table? Because if we're looking at the financial plan for how this is going to be funded, we don't have any updates on how that's going. The public has asked questions about whether there's a viable partner and what's included in the RFP, but we haven't heard anything about the financial plan for the Connect Arm Crossing. We've only heard about the financial projections for everything else in the LRTP. So are we supposed to approve or consider anything about the financial risk or viability of the Connect Arm Crossing?
Through the chair, Commissioner Pease, the information that's provided here is just related on our existing long-range plan. The questions that you've asked this evening, we will reach out to Connect Arm Bridge and Total Authority and ask them what the status is of their current funding and their financing plan. We do have current estimates as to the cost developed by then, so we will have that information. But I think all of the-- and I could be wrong, but most of the information that's available on the current financing plan for Connect Arm Bridge and Total Authority, that's the most current, would be available on their website. We did not provide that to you, and that's hindsight on our part, maybe.
Mr. Phelps, you have something additional to add?
Well, it's actually following up on Mrs. Pease's question, and I'm not sure it was actually answered, because I think Ms. Pease was asking a broader question of the effect of the deletion of this project upon the whole transportation funding of the federal transportation system for the urban area, that I don't think is an issue that we're going to be dealing with. Certainly, there's an impact, but are you suggesting in these revisions that we're going to see how the working effect will occur if they diminish this project from the LRTP in this document?
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps and Commissioner Pease, I have not heard-- well, I have heard some concerns that Connect Arm Bridge and Total Authority may be interested in seeking state funds to help build the project. Would need to confirm that with them. If that was the case, that would be a problem, because right now, the way the financing plan, irrespective of the amount of money the bridge is costing, or whether or not their investors are in line or not, the current conditions, and I think the staff would continue to forward that recommendation, the current conditions are, there will be no additional state or federal funds applied to the Connect Arm Bridge project that would be, you know, basically be jeopardized or could be used for the Anchorage Long Range Plan. So I guess the heart of the matter is if Connect Arm Bridge and Total Authority are looking for state funds to build or support their project, that's a problem. I think from the staff's perspective, at least on the current conditions of the LRTP, if they stand on their own, that would be the plan. And again, we'll talk to them about that.
Mr. Phelps?
Again, I'm just really trying to clarify here in terms of what we're trying to do, what you're asking us to do. So the answer I just recently heard was that the issue is concerned specifically with the bridge itself, and that may be so. But the question that I'm trying to get to is that, is there anything more that you wish the commission to deal with in terms of the funding aspects, or is the appropriateness of the bridge in terms of its financial capability? You're not trying to ask the commission as to the impact of or of the deletion of that project upon the remainder of the transportation system, are you?
Through the chair, in the sense that that was one of the conditions, that the project was put into the LRTP in the first place, that is absolutely something you might want to consider. And those conditions are in-- I'm not sure if they're in here-- in Chapter 12. We could have and should have probably given you those conditions, and I apologize for that. We gave them to the policy committee, and we should have given them to you also. They were the conditions that were largely outlined in the Assembly Resolution in 2007. When the Assembly voted to put it in, the Connect Arm Crossing sent a letter to the AMATS in, I believe it was March 26th of 2006, asking that the project be put into the LRTP because they needed a record of decision. That was the reason. And there was-- the P&amp;Z Commission had their say, and then when it went to the Assembly, the Assembly decided to put it in, but with conditions. And there were A through E, and one of those conditions was that the financing details be solidified. That was one of the conditions for keeping it in there. You will want to look at those conditions, and we will get them to you.
Okay. So you are asking us to look at some aspects of transportation funding that are specific to those questions, and you'll provide the permission to those for our June 1st meeting? Okay.
Okay. Ms. Pease?
I just wanted to say that Mr. Wilber has provided them in our packet until now. They were just available to us on the web, but we do have them in our PowerPoint packet that was given to us today, but maybe some people didn't get to read them previously. But it would seem to me that since the Assembly wants to make sure that no state funding is needed, that we do need to look at the financing plan. And also, the condition E says that Kabada will fund design and construction of the Ingle Gamble connection, so we need to see if that's still their plan. And then it also said reconnaissance of the environmental phase of Ingle Gamble will start in 2008, so I guess we should find out whether that has happened, too.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? I don't see anyone else in the queue. Well, then it's my turn. I just have one brief request, and it has to do with the letter we received today from Mr. Richards. And I don't recall which one of the commissioners was that brought up the subject about having this reviewed by an attorney, but I think that that would be a good idea, as it seems like on page two of this letter that Mr. Richard is-- or whoever wrote this letter, I don't know if he wrote it or someone else wrote it for him, is-- appears to be giving some legal advice or legal opinion about the violation of federal laws. And it would be helpful to have some, you know, a legal opinion from our municipal attorney's office about the statements that are made in this letter. And I really just need to comment. I concur with Mr. Phelps. When I received a copy of this today, I was really confused. I was so confused in all of my years of public service, which go back to the 1970s, I've never gotten a letter from a commissioner or an assistant, you know, a deputy commissioner, and especially to a director. And I didn't know why we even ended up with it, because it was directed to the policy committee. So I just found it to be a very curious thing. I'm sure there's a backstory, but it's very curious. So it'll be interesting to get some answers. That's all I have. Anything else from anybody else?
Madam Chair, we need to continue this.
Yes, we're going to need a motion to continue it till June 1st. And I just want to mention again, anyone that testified tonight will not be able to testify again, although you can continue to submit written comments.
Madam Chair, move to continue this hearing through June 1st.
To come up under unfinished business.
Definitely.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Is there any objection? Hearing none. This is postponed to June 1st under unfinished business. And we do have some other unfinished business, so I'm not exactly sure where it's going to line up, but it will be under unfinished business. Looking-- turning to staff at this time, do we-- is Mr. Nelson still here, or did he leave? You're going-- are you going--
He's gone.
He's gone, okay. Do you have any other business for us tonight? No? Okay.
This might be yours.
All right. And last week, we had a long commissioners' chat. We're going to need to get copies of the tapes for-- all of the tapes for Mr. Wang, because I intend for, you know, he needs to listen to all of these prior to June 1st. Well, and does anyone have any comments before we adjourn for the evening?
Unless I got Mr. Earnhardt's. I don't think so. I think that's yours.
Mr. Mitter, I'm still confused as to what they want us to do, but I'm sure it could be clarified for us.
I'm sure to be clarified before June 1st. We will need clarification.
I was around for this previous one.
Can you make a note of that?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Okay, we're going to meet-- we're talking to our municipal staff now. We will need very explicit instructions on June 1st, exactly what you want us to do. Okay, Mr. Phelps, did you have something else? Ms. Yoshimura?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let-- remind everyone again that the Residential Design Subcommittee of Planning and Zoning is going on a tour to look at garage doors tomorrow at 3:30, and we're leaving from my office at 3801 Center Point Drive, and anyone who would like to accompany us is welcome.
Okay. Well, I will send you off with my blessings and trust that you will take nice pictures. Okay, right now, I am looking for my-- looking for, because I never did get around to sending out an email, for a couple of AMATS-related volunteers to be available to do scoring whenever those tasks come up. And it doesn't usually probably come out more than during one cycle a year, maybe a couple. Am I right, Lance?
That's correct. We'll get a couple, and we'll pick some-- give some options and dates. Talk to Mr. Lyon, get back to you.
Okay, well, I need people. I'm picking people now to tell you who those are.
He's looking forward to the names. He knows they're coming.
He knows they're coming. He knows they're coming. Well, right now, I'm looking for volunteers.
If it's, is there one or twice a year, this is what I volunteer for?
I'll do it, yeah.
Okay, you will volunteer for foreign road projects? Okay, I need a second person in case Mr. Phelps isn't available. Madam Chair, what is the timeframe in terms of what weeks, what months, what hours of the day do you need volunteer? This person-- Is there some flexibility, because some of our members have children, that they either get from school, take to school, or do school things, whether other things in their life that have some structure?
There is flexibility, and we will do what we can to accommodate the individual's calendar. We'd like to do it between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., if at all possible, and not on Sunday.
And is this something that you're doing in June, July, August? In August, September? What time period are we looking at?
Right now, like in the next two weeks.
Okay, I can't, are you available to do it in the next two weeks?
I have an impression they'll be talking about a couple hours here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Happy scoring. Mr. Phelps, you're it.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you already know the process, so, you do, so hit the floor running with my blessings. Okay. Are you in the queue, or did I just forget to take you out?
Take you.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? No? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Reddleton. Good work tonight, you guys. Excellent questions, awesome questions. I want to get that on the record before we adjourn. Is there any objection to adjourning? I don't hear any.